Board Director's Search Committee meeting. It is January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. We have, we're missing one member right now, but we can get going. And we're going to, today, we're going to discuss the, the search brochure. And we need a description here and, and the contract. And if we got time, we'll talk about the evaluation. But we're going to try to, try to get the meeting banged out in an hour or so. So, so I don't know if Frida's going to make it or not. So, so let's, let's get going here. And I guess, you know, the first thing we can tackle is the, the brochure. And it's three pages, but really what, what we need to look at right now to kind of get this thing worked out. And we're working on the, we're going to work on the selection criteria. And that will be the subject of a special call meeting on February twelfth, after we get comments back from everybody. But what we need right now is the, the description of, of Coffee County, page two here. So we need the description of Coffee County and, and the school system, the system facts, and basically some information on the community. And I think Beth's texted us some information.
She did.
That we can incorporate in there. And I thought Frida was going to pull some stuff. And we can pull some stuff off the, off the Coffee County website, Coffee County Administration website as far as, and then probably, probably need some, to include some information on City Manchester also, so in there as well. So, do we have, so the system facts here? Are we able to gather that information here internally, Dr. Powell?
Yes, sir, we can. I don't, I don't have it with me, but we can, we can get that information.
Yeah.
Everything I have to get, actually need to get with probably Dr. Cornelius, because he'll have the information on
Right.
the population demographics and also the student
All right.
groups and at the bottom. But we, we can get that information very recent, very quickly, yes, sir, when he gets here.
Yeah. TSBA has asked us to basically get this to them this week, so. So.
But yes, we can get that system facts to you as soon as everybody gets back in.
We can do that. And I guess I can, you know, I can go ahead and consolidate everything and get it to Dr. Griff. So, Mr. Gilli, Mr. Ansford, any comments on that?
Some of this stuff we can get from Industrial Board too, if we need to.
Okay, yeah.
We can get that.
Yeah, I think, you know, the way I'm seeing these three pages is a, is a brochure that you're, you're going to email blast and post everywhere to
Right.
trigger the initial steps. You know, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, changing some names here and there, and obviously a mascot picture.
Yeah.
And the wording's there, but.
We do need, yeah, we do need that.
Other than that, you know, the, the community section, description of the community, and then your system facts aligned with here. I think, I think this is, I mean, I think we could let this.
It should be pretty straightforward. Jennifer sent us an email and wanted to have, you know, mention agriculture and rural.
Well, if you get into the community facts
Yeah.
and you read what's in Mylan's here.
Yeah.
And they're talking about the no-til field days and things around the community and stuff of that nature, they're, they're gearing towards the same kind of concept and thought process. So that shouldn't be very hard at all to integrate that
Right.
Yeah.
concern in with the community.
Yeah.
You know, they've got their, their fare in here and everything too.
Yeah.
You know, I know the, the Quarterback Club used to have a tourism video that Manchester Tourism made with a description and, and it was voice and everything. And they talked about, we played it in a couple of games. And they told a lot of these facts. A lot of things just like this was in that video. So we may just watch that video and see what was actually said in it.
Probably, I would say that
Transcribe the video.
Ryan French would probably be able to get that for us.
Yeah. And, well, I can pull the video and we can watch it, but.
Yeah.
But that was a, that was a very informative, because obviously that's what Manchester Tourism was doing, was explaining the background of the community and everything to look forward to, to the community and all that good stuff. And we were just playing it to the community over the Jumbotron.
Right.
Back then, it's been two or three, three years or better. But that would have a lot of that in there. And I don't think it would be hard to incorporate that in at all.
Okay.
It's just, but as far as the basics and the general design and layout, I don't have an issue with it.
Right. Yeah, I, I didn't think so either. So if we can get that information, information from the Industrial Board, information from the school, and then pull some information up there.
Generate a good paragraph and then update those same listings on the one.
Yeah, we can get this.
Kind of, kind of blend everything together in there.
Yeah.
Who are we going to get to do that? Are we going to do that, or is it something Tammy's going to do?
They're, they're going to put it together, but we, we'll need to get, you know.
The data.
Yeah.
The data and give it to her.
We're right now focused on page two here.
Yes, sir.
So the other stuff is going to come a little bit later, after our meetings and stuff. But, you know, we'll get them the mascot and the logo and all that stuff so we can.
Yes, sir.
And make sure we get the proper colors, because I think I, Mr. Shores corrected me a while back on, on our, our colors. So I got them wrong. Oh, I, I, but yeah, we were talking in a meeting, I, I got them wrong. So, so I want to make sure I get that right too, so. Yeah, I was just kind of, you know, I didn't have the right shade or something like that. So it's kind of like, and that, that's important, you know? I mean, that's your identity or brand identity. So, so I kind of, we want to get that right too. So we, we can pull all that and get that to her. So, and then we'll fill in the selection criteria and the front page after our board meeting or special call meeting on the twelfth of February. And then we should be good to go then, so.
I didn't, I didn't see where there's much room on yet myself, but.
Much room to what?
Almost ten items, is that what you're talking about?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's going to be pretty basic, but we'll
Yeah.
you know, but we'll get this feedback and stuff. Ah, there we go.
You did make it.
Yeah.
That's okay. Is it cold out there?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, you've been outside all day, yeah?
I'm telling you, hands are cracking and.
Supposed to start warming up again tomorrow, so. So we were just talking.
I'm not spread out on your side a little bit. No, you're good.
We were just talking about the brochure, so I'll go ahead and kind of, we're, we're focusing on page two, you know, getting all that information together. So Dr. Powell's going to get us information or from Dr. Cornelius on the, the school, the system facts that we can plug in there. And then, yeah, it's kind of.
Yeah, I printed all that off. Probably didn't need to.
Caught up here, so. So page two is what you want on that brochure is what we're.
Yeah, I'm going to go on with this.
Yeah. And if we got, Robert's got videos.
What have we decided on the minimum qualifications?
That will be, page one's, the criteria will be, that will be, come out of our, after we get all the comments and everything.
We haven't gotten that, we haven't decided on our minimum qualifications yet. That's what I was asking.
Oh, we, we have, yeah, we did that in, in the meeting.
It was a master's, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we made some changes there, and that, that needs to be updated in a policy committee yet to come too, so. But the selection criteria will be based on the meetings on the twenty seventh. And then we'll go over that in a, TSBA will collate everything and present it to us in a, what, what they found out and, and all the results in a special call meeting on the twelfth of February.
And that'll kind of wrap the selection criteria answers what we need to have there based off of what that is.
So this whole thing should be done after that, once we adopt that, then, then that, that will go out.
Like Ms. Frida said, you know, in starting the minimum qualification, stuff like that, we've already decided most of those things. It's just changing the wording in here and our mascot and
Right.
the wording up top.
Yeah.
Selection criteria will come February
Twelfth.
twelfth. And then by February twelfth, the community description section on page two.
Page two stuff, we need to get that to them this week, so, so that's kind of.
And system facts.
Yeah.
Those are the things.
So everything on page two, we kind of need to pull together this week and.
The top of page two, I think, is fine. That's a basic anyways. And then, of course, your third page is, that's the normal.
How are we going to pull together this community? I mean, we, we definitely, you know, can't use what they've got. Someone in charge of, of coming up with the community resources we have and our highlights in this community section.
I told them about, we used to play a video on the Jumbotron that Manchester Tourism put together. Sounded a lot like this that did when you read it.
Would y'all mind if I come up with that?
No.
Because I mean, I feel like it needs to be geared to Coffee County.
Yeah.
I recommended you for that, so.
As a matter of fact, before you got here, we took a vote and we appointed you in charge.
Oh, no.
We was hoping you would say that. We was hoping you would say that because we had already.
I'll go along with that.
Great idea, Frida.
I'm going, I'm going to ride on it right here. Frida.
All right.
What a fantastic idea, Frida.
I will make it, we're, we're going to have a lot of people wanting to come to our community.
If you want to do that, that is, that's excellent.
I feel like that's what a prospective
Right.
director would look at, well, what kind of community am I
Exactly.
coming to? And we want to make sure that we
Yeah.
highlight some of the best
Right.
things of Coffee County, not just Bonnaroo.
Now, I'm going to put an exclamation point.
Yeah.
Frida.
So Robert and, and.
And I'd like to see.
Yeah, we're free.
I'd like to see the video, because that would certainly give a good, you know, a start point.
They used to play it two, three, four years ago and this and that. It was a Manchester Tourism video.
Uh huh, but see, that, yeah.
Went all with pictures and video of different places throughout the community and then a big description, they just kept talking.
Right.
It was about two minutes.
Right. I just want us to make sure that we go beyond Bonnaroo.
Yeah.
I don't think he mentioned nothing about it. It was on Stonefort mostly.
Oh, okay.
On Stonefort mostly.
Ms. Hodges sent it, you have this email here, she'd sent to Melissa about making sure that we have something about agriculture. It's in your folder, I think.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Or lay in your folder somewhere.
Because, okay.
Just make sure it's in that.
Yeah. I got one somewhere.
Here it is, Frida.
Lot of paper here.
Okay, it's probably in here.
So that just leaves system facts then.
Because everything else can be plugged in, can't it?
Yeah, well, over here on this side, your, your grade served and all that. Looks like a.
Yeah. And we just, you know.
That looks like a Mr. Powell and Mr. Ballard.
And just, you know.
Informational list.
They're requesting that this week and, you know, so they can start pulling this together and then, you know, fill in the rest of it and we'll go from there and.
Because it's about our stu-, student population demographics and student groups.
Right.
And system, so.
And I don't know who's in charge of our, our logo and all that stuff, so I'm sure we can get that taken care of.
I'd say everybody's got some of them.
Yeah.
Well, y'all got the, the one.
Isn't what you're wanting, you're doing the little, what's it called?
Double C like this?
No, I'm talking about the, the little shield with the
Yeah, oh, okay.
That's actually Coffee County schools, whereas that's more of the high school and so forth.
Yeah.
You probably want the, the actual districts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that'd be up here somewhere too.
I, I have a copy.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then probably just the colors. Do we have like the, the color codes and all that stuff or?
I think the color was actually black and gold, was it, Mr. Shores, when it originally set up?
For the system.
Yeah, for the system, yeah.
But.
Oh, we got to, we got to make it black and red somehow.
Black and red? But I mean, what shade of red? I mean, usually it's a.
It's red. I think on Letterman jackets is rice red.
Okay. But I mean, they may, they may ask for like a hex code or something on, on the actual color code, so that's. But we can, we can work that. I mean, that's, that's a small detail, so. So, all right, well, then if that, Frida's basically going to, you know, be in charge of that section. Did you want to kind of look at Frida, the, the top section too? And then Dr. Powell will talk to Mr. Cornelius or Dr. Cornelius and get the system facts, and that should pretty well take care of that.
I'm sure there's something, you know, that we have that as far as the mission and that sort of thing for the county schools system already in place that I could take that from or tweak it.
We should.
I told them before you got here too, Ms. Jones, that I'd get some literature from the Industrial Board too.
Right.
Right.
About.
Because that's a big thing, you know, that's in the future.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
So between the Industrial Board and Mr. Gilli's video, we should have pretty much all the, in the system information, we should have all the information we need.
Yes, sir.
But your paragraph, is that what you're talking about right now at top?
Yeah.
Page two?
Yeah.
That's kind of, I mean, that's just your normal good.
You know, I think
Cookie cutter.
Yeah, I think what we would say, you know, we would say, you know, something like, there's seven schools, you know, so many elementary schools, go through five. I mean, that, that needs to be a description.
Right.
Because they have three schools with.
We'll, we'll put that under the system.
Yeah, that's in the system.
On that second page, Frida.
Okay.
I'll get with key by Dr. Neilson, we're going to, we'll work that information up for you.
Okay, well, I was just looking at that third paragraph where it says, each of our three schools has a family-like approach for every child.
Yeah, that's, that's something you like to work with, I guess. Whomever you want to. We're just, we're going to get the system facts together.
I mean, this one here, Mylan, they pretty much listed all their stuff. They have the Christmas parade and farmer's market. Folklore, fall folklore, jamboree and all their, all that stuff. So we got all that too, if we wanted to put that in there.
Mylan no-til field day, they must be all over. We can put the tractor pull.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For West End.
That'd be interesting. We need to make it something specific to us that, that describes our county school, our county.
Yes, ma'am.
Good luck.
You show up late to a meeting and
You got voted in.
Don't even be a minute late. Or you may get volunteered.
I'll come up with something.
I, I think it'd be pretty easy, so. All right, if we got that taken care of, let's.
I hope that there's nothing else y'all done.
Do we have to make a motion or anything on that?
No, we're committee meeting, so it's going to, we can just
Yeah.
agree to work on that. So now the contract, we'll have to, you know, whatever we decide on here and whatever changes, we'll have to go to the full board and adopt that as, as a template. Although, keep in mind that, you know, a few things will probably end up being negotiated, you know, with a, with a new director, so. So we have some example contracts. And there is this TSBA, and I have actually digitized all these and, and have put them into Word format so we can kind of cut and paste. Although I got some, I got to clean it up. There's some, you know, whatever you, OCR things, it kind of does some weird formatting things, so I might got to fix that. But I'm not worried about that right now, so we can kind of decide exactly what we want to do. But probably the main one right now is the contract, the current contract that we have. That is this one. That is our current contract format. I have not been able to find out how that originated. I think it's kind of a standard format, but it looks like it goes back past Dr. McFall. You know, from what we've been able to find, you know, so this has kind of been the contract format we have used. I have included, and I, you know, personally, I don't think it's a contract. I mean, it covers everything. The thing that we had an issue on was the performance evaluation and the annual performance agreement in this particular contract, because we didn't have any of those things. We have talked about putting in a, last time we had a, had a meet, had, had the Director's Search Committee meeting, we talked about putting in a performance provision where we would pay a bonus based on, on some specific performance goals. So that's probably the main thing we want to look at adding, you know, and however, you know, is anybody interested in changing anything else in this contract, using a different format? There's, there's a couple other contracts here for the Boyd contract. And there's another one in here that have some performance provisions in them. So Washington County Schools and.
There was one, and you marked them, the ones you shared were, had yellow sections in them.
Yeah.
But did these, any of these?
There's a. I think the yellow was mainly. I'm trying to find that in this one. It may not have printed out when Melissa printed it out, but I think
And I'm trying to remember.
These two from Washington County Schools have, the Halliburton and the Boyd had performance.
That is where, because I won't, just me personally, I'd love to get away from the current contract we had.
Okay.
And, and never have to see it again. Me personally, I just like the format of the, the two Washington Counties. And I believe the Halliburton one was a little bit better, but it might have been, but, but I didn't see what I was expecting to see in it. I'm, I'm not finding, no, never mind, the Boyd one.
Which one?
The Boyd one.
The Boyd, okay.
The Boyd one.
That's, that's Washington County, I think, Mr. Daniel, yeah.
Yes, Washington County, the Boyd one.
Well, I definitely, no, I'm not. I definitely think we need to keep some of these things in there, like, for instance, the, well, the residency.
Residency, okay.
Because I don't know if that has that in there or not. But I think it's very important that whoever is our director needs to reside in Coffee County or an address of Manchester or Telahoma.
Okay.
Or Hillsborough or Beach Grove, whatever.
We talked about surrounding counties.
Surrounding counties.
We talked about.
I, I think they need to live within an address of, it could be a Telahoma address. It could, because that means it's right on the border. I don't think surrounding counties. If you're in Rutherford County, if you're in Warren County, Bedford. Now, Telahoma, that's fine, if you got a Telahoma address, if you got a Manchester address. When we get outside of that, they're not going to be vested in here. They're still going to be coming back and forth. And I think if, if they, it has to be, in other words, that would be Bedford, Franklin.
Warren.
Warren, Cannon and Rutherford.
Right.
And, you know, technically, a person could live close to, they could live in Smyrna or Laverne and never move here.
Right.
Or they could live in, in town of Sheberville, never move here, Matt Memville. But as long as they have an, an address that's connected with their school system, then they're going to be close enough that they're vested, they're going to have the address for. And, you know, if it's Hillsborough, if it's Beach Grove, it's Summitville. Is there any other, Morrison, there's Morrison addresses that connect with Coffee County.
Beach Grove.
That's just, I mean, I'm just trying to keep it more local. And we don't want to be too, you know, too strict. But still, I just feel like that if you open it up to, there's a lot of people, for instance, if it was someone from Laverne, they might not commit, you know, they wouldn't want to move here. They may be the best candidate, I don't want to know anybody from Laverne, but make that known.
Right.
But they might be the best candidate that we might choose. And then they would not have to move. And I just don't see how you can be over a school system, not be vested in the community. And that's just my thinking.
And.
We discussed that last time, and I thought we kind of decided that we were going to go with Coffee County or neighboring counties, but I.
We were, we were going to, I had suggested within mileage.
Yeah.
But then Mr. Cordell had, he was the one that brought up around, about the surrounding counties.
Right.
But then you go all the way to the other, you know.
Yeah. But that's, that's a good point.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And, and that's where, and the, when I said Boyd and Washington County, I wasn't talking about it being the, but we're, we're, both of them, it's almost like both of them are the two Washington Counties. One has the bonus stuff that we're looking about, looking for. The other one has the residencies, the Halliburton, the Halliburton. It has the residency, the director shall maintain his or her residency in Washington County throughout the term of this agreement. The director's failure to maintain her residency, his or her, in Washington County shall be a basis for dismissal for calls with no further financial obligations on part of the board.
What page is that, Mr.?
Uh, that's the very first page of the Halliburton.
Okay.
Resident, number four.
Yep, number four.
Number four.
Bullet four, however you want.
I mean, I'm, I'm personally fine with it, yeah.
For instance, Viola, I think of Viola as Coffee County. I mean, I, I don't, you know, I think of Morrison, a lot of Morrison. You know, it's, we're so integrated with these communities, but not necessarily with Rutherford and all, I don't know.
Right, right.
I'm just thinking.
I'm agree, I'm in agreement with that, yeah.
That's kind of where I was. Like, if you read the, the Boyd one, and, and you read this about the, the goals and the, the salaries, the performance bonuses. Besides changing some numbers on there of the bonuses. And work and leave, professional growth, every, everything in this is, to me, I mean, there's, there's a few little minor changes here, we can get into that. And the performance evaluation, and it gets really in depth on the evaluation and all of that. However, you know, this is a great contract. However, we need to pull this one over here and definitely circle bullet point number four.
On the Halliburton one?
Yeah. That's kind of, that's kind of where I was looking, you know.
And we can.
Picking parts, because this is.
We can critique each one of them.
Mix and match, I don't have any problem with that.
You know, that makes it easy. We, we, you take, if, if you look at the Boyd and the Boyd, when you read it front to back, hey, that's great, that's covering a lot of points that every one of the board members was interested in with accountability and, and goals, performance-based goals, things of that nature, everything that every board member has mentioned and talked about. All, all that good stuff. But then it lacks in things like the residency and, you know, little, little items. So we could almost pick out of, because it's, it's better in its entirety, it'd be better to probably pick out of the Halliburton one or similar to place those pieces and parts you're looking for into it.
Right.
All right. Well, then.
I, I, that, that's just what, kind of the grasp that wrapped around my brain when I was reading all of them, that that's a very, I mean, both of them are very intense contracts and direct.
Did you look at the TSBA example contract?
I didn't really tell much difference between the. I didn't really tell much difference between the...
I, I looked at it today too and I didn't see...
What we had.
I think that's where I was at.
I think that's where ours came from.
I threw it over there.
I think it's where ours came from.
Well, then, why don't we do this? How about if we take, pull this, the Boyd contract here and kind of use that as the base and let's go through real quick, paragraph by paragraph and see what we might want to change and what we might want to add.
Add that up and then we'll pick pieces and parts out of the Halliburton maybe?
Exactly, yeah, I think that's probably the best, best way to go and, and probably all these contracts are good. It's just we want to make sure that we got...
Pieces and parts that work.
Yeah.
A little more detail.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I agree with, with Ms. Jones on the residency thing too, because that's, that's kind of what I had brought up before, the mileage thing. Although Viola and Morrison is not in our county, but it's still within, obviously within driving distance, you know. So, I mean, you've got some pieces of Telahoma and, that's in Telahoma City limits, but they're in Franklin County. I mean, there's what, several?
Well, my thinking is if you lived in other side of Sheberville, other side of Murfreesboro, or Matt Memville, even Cannon County, you know, just for instance, when we're having all this bad weather and the director's at home and they're not in our, you know, they don't know what's going on here.
That's a good point.
And then also too, they're not going to have the availability, I mean, have the availability, but not maybe the, time to come back and forth to events, you know, that happens in our school all the time and directors, you know, usually going to participate in. They just need to be here close, I'll put it that way, here.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with that and, you know, kind of the easiest thing would be to say to reside in, in the legal confines of Coffee County, I mean, that's, you know, I, I don't know any other way to...
What's the term you used to hook it up to Viola, age of Warren County, or you open it up, you know, what's the term you used?
You'd have to go within miles.
There ain't one, yeah.
You'd have to just take a compass and put it right here and then spin it and say how many miles you got, but then you're going to be...
Yeah, then you get into shades of gray and all that stuff.
Yeah, you leave this one out over here that didn't get invited.
Yeah.
Here you are.
Well, and, and, you know, I mean, the other thing, the other thing too is you can give them a certain period of time to move within Cop, Coffee County, you know, I mean, that's, you know, if they're going to, if they're going to, you know, signing a three-year contract, then, you know, they should be willing to commit to moving here. So, I don't have any problem saying that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think if you, I agree with what you're saying, but you probably need to put in your contract somewhere if you happen to select a director that doesn't live in Coffee County, to put in here something about moving expenses, if you want to put that in there. Some contracts have them, some don't have them.
I think that adds moving expenses.
Some of these do have moving.
This Halliburton's got a moving expense thing, so we can review that.
See, I think there's one of those, if they even got a daily, I mean, got a monthly housing allowance.
So, there's, you take these two, two great contracts, boy, I think we can come up with a really good one between the, you know.
Yeah.
All in all, I believe this one page for page, the Boyd is a lot of what we want and it'd be easier to pick these two bullet points out of this one and move them over here, if that be the case. So, I'm ready to...
Could we put it in there, it could be the board's discretion? I mean, you know, suppose we did get a, a very good candidate in Warren County that lived at the edge of the county line and vest, you know, maybe lives on a farm, you know, I'm just thinking that outside of...
I, I agree.
I mean, I just hate to just pass up because a lot of our, a lot of the people in our school system, they live in the surrounding, I mean, I know several...
You get several principals that don't live in this county.
Well, and, and here's the deal, is contracts are negotiable, so we're going to end up negotiating anyway.
Yeah.
So that's something we could negotiate if we need to.
Oh, is that right?
You're gonna, you're gonna, and he, Mr. Ballard's right, you're gonna, we're going to end up having to negotiate a contract anyways.
Right, so if it's, but, but the thing of it is exactly, if that's in the base, then they're not going to send us people to interview that's not willing to live in the county.
I don't think they're basing it off that, are they, because they're getting people from Florida, they're getting people...
Because if we've got principals that, that are not here, that do not live in Coffee County...
If I is on, Ms. Jones, you're, they're supposed to send you every application that comes to there and not just select, yeah.
And then we can go into contract negotiations about the residency part and how, or expenses or whatever, we can go into that then.
Because you're going to negotiate salary, you're going to negotiate education.
This just gets a base contract that gets what we like in there and you must live, so that's a pretty good idea that you must live in Coffee County, but we'll talk.
Yeah.
Right.
That discretion would be okay. The discretion would be okay, wouldn't it?
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah, let's use that as a...
I, I agree with...
So you could say, or at the discretion of the board, so what is the...
Right, that would, that would cover it.
That, that would be a better choice of words, probably.
Think they need vested in, in our county.
For the term of this agreement and just put by discretion.
Yeah, or by the board's discretion, yeah.
Board discretion.
All right, so...
You just, you want to go through the Boyd one and just...
Let's go through the Boyd one and then, well, then we'll go back to the Halliburton one and pull the paragraphs we want and figure out where we're going to add them in. So, so, starting one, term of contract, I mean, that's, that's obviously...
You got to change that, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, we're going to change that, so, but that's pretty straightforward.
Term.
You need to determine how many years you want to offer an initial contract now.
Right.
Uh, well, I think we didn't, uh, best I remember Tammy, that night on the phone in here, it was a two-year on the initial?
I think so, yeah.
It was a two-year on the initial and then when you renew the initial, you can go up to four years then. But it has to be close to the end of the two-year and cannot take effect before the end of the two-year. It has to start at the end of the two-year to do the four-year.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
Okay, well, we've got term of contract, we would, we would insert Coffee County Schools, what date would it start?
Be the same that June...
Our goal would be to start June 1st, yeah, that's, that's the, that's the timeline we got.
June 1st, 2025.
Yeah.
And ending on what?
Well...
Two years?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, two years, yeah.
Would it be June 1st on, on the, not, not May 31st, okay, on June 1st, 2027, okay. All right, under this professional certification, in this where we would put in masters? I, I don't see that anywhere where it's got the specific certification. Do you, maybe we need to go over to Halliburton or ours, you know, where it says professional certification. Throughout the term of this contract, the director shall keep and maintain any non-necessary certification. Is there somewhere in here where it's got the...
Halliburton says by the policy.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and we have the policy too, so we need to put that in, wouldn't we?
So we can reference policy.
Well, you'd pull Halliburton in. Halliburton is the one that says, "The Director shall furnish to the board evidence of the Director's attainment of the qualifications set out by the board adopted policies, as amended from time to time in regards to the office of the Director."
All right, so we'd mark out number two on this one and put insert number two of Halliburton.
Right.
Two, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And duties, okay, that's easy enough.
Duties.
Yeah, because it just refers back to our policies and then it allows the policy to change without changing the contract, so...
Of the board and Coffee County Schools.
And I don't, I've not found a difference between either one of the contracts, the Halliburton or the Boyd on that one, as far as duties, other than the strategic planning.
Yeah.
And, and on this also too, I think if, if from time to time, it would require travel in and out of the county and the state, you know, because if they go to functions across, you know, there's a lot of things they need to attend that's not just in the county. Is that be appropriate to put that there? I would put in, in the state.
Which, where's that?
A number, a B, 3B.
Oh, 3B, yeah. Ohio County and state, okay, yeah, easy enough. Yeah, the only thing on 3A is, is the, the Halliburton one specifically referenced the, the TCA code number, you know, but whether you need that level of detail.
Well...
What's in there, state law, TCA is your state laws.
Yeah, it basically says TCA, so, you know, so, I mean, that's, there's only one place that's in there, so...
Well, the Halliburton is a little bit more fulfilling and not as broad. If you just read the whole number three in Halliburton.
Yeah.
It's, it's almost a little beyond us, so where it says the Director shall, on the Halliburton one, "The Director shall select all personnel pursuant to board policy, recommend exemplary teachers for tenure", well, I guess that's part of it too, though, yeah.
So that's the Hallib...
That's pretty good.
Halliburton number three is...
Yeah, maybe that's better.
Well, maybe I spoke wrong, maybe we need to just take the compensation part out of here with performance bonuses and move it over to the Halliburton.
It's very specific, isn't it?
So the, the number...
Pretty cut and dry, it's got policy numbers and all of that in it, so it's...
Which is interesting because they're both Washington County Board of Education, so I wonder why they changed it.
Two boards.
Yeah.
So, so the number three, the number three, I like the Halliburton better, I do, kind of.
I tell you what the difference is, this is a woman that they're employing, he's got her all the way through it.
You got to change that, haven't you, with his, that's her.
Because it was her, says...
But it's just so much more.
I mean, they've even got it in parentheses, they're very...
And I like the TCA being noted.
Yeah, they have the, the, the policy numbers and all of that.
So...
Yeah, and it's...
It is more direct.
Yeah, it is.
I kind of recommend crossing number three out of Boyd and bringing Halliburton number three over to it.
I'd, I'd agree with that.
I'll second that, yeah.
Insert...
Well, I'm telling you what, I like Halliburton all the way through.
Three. Well, well, we're about to go to the next section that, now you're getting into what I was liking. Okay, so we're going to pull three.
Okay, so, and so that includes the strategic planning too?
Yeah, it does, both of them do.
All right.
Okay, so we're just...
Scratch that because we do that anyway, all right, so...
Forward compensation.
Where do we want to skip the residence again?
Get around to your salary and then the performance bonuses.
Right. And that's, 4A is pretty straightforward.
Boy, now, are we leaving the strategic planning, because I think that's very important, that's something we've been lacking, is, you know, nothing in, saying specifically about strategic planning, is how, does Halliburton, it didn't address that.
Yeah, it, uh...
The Halliburton one does not...
We're keeping it though, aren't we, in, in Boyd?
Include anything of strategic planning.
No, I think that needs to be, I think that needs to stay in there. The, the Director shall develop a proposed strategic plan, I mean, that's, that's very important, that this new director that comes in here has a plan for what they're going to accomplish and, and each school have a plan, because that's their purpose of, of this, is to making sure everybody knows what they're, what's expected of them, what, what our goals are and, and what they'll be evaluated on. So I think we need to keep that C, strategic planning.
I'll, you have any comment?
And add it right to the back of the three from Halliburton we're moving over.
Right, so that would be, number three would be 3A, this would be 3A Halliburton, and then this would be 3B, strategic planning.
Right, 3B.
Okay.
And then insert the proper dates and things.
Okay.
Uh, C, and it says not later than January 1st of each calendar year of this contract, the Director will propose revisions to the strategic plan, so that way, we would be presented with that plan and the Director would say, okay, we've met this, this and this, we're going to change this and this, we're, we're in, you know, we know what's going on.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
That's good.
So, four is compensation, Halliburton has, compensation is five and they have residency above, but I, I don't know where you'd want to put residency in, in here.
You can put it right, well, just leave it like it is and just have it, call it out as residency.
Right after three, put it right before.
Yeah, just, just call it out.
Compensation.
Yeah, call it out as residency.
Insert residency.
So four is residency and then five would be compensation?
Yes, sir, that's my thought.
Okay.
Yeah, because we've got A and B under, number three, and then that would be...
That'd be four, to cross that out would be five.
Four would be...
Five would be compensation then.
Four would be resident, resident six, yeah.
I got to do that or I'll get lost.
Same too.
All right, so five is compensation, so starting annual salary, that's, um, you know, June 1, 2025 and, um, that is to be negotiated and I guess we'll have to look at some ranges and...
And, and I think the, and just my take right off the bat, the compensation section in Boyd, I like it being broke apart between the starting sal, or the salary and the bonuses.
Yes.
Being separated, where when you look over at Halliburton, it's just one big block of, and it's really just, all it's talking about is, uh, uh, salary and then the board has the option to give them a bonus, but it doesn't say anything about the structure behind it or anything else.
On Boyd?
Halliburton.
Oh, Halliburton.
See, and this...
So I think the Boyd's is...
Uh, yeah, I think the Boyd's is better because where it's got performance bonuses, that goes back to where you were talking about. It says, "As part of the strategic plan developed", you know, which they've developed up here, because their goals, then they're going to establish four measurable benchmarks that's tied to academic improvement and it doesn't necessarily, our goals wouldn't necessarily have to be academic improvement, it could be...
Test scores.
Yeah, or it could be, or it could be, uh, community involvement, as, as, you know, specifics of how that's happened, not just test scores, I mean, I just think that's, that's one major part, but that's not the only thing that we need to look at.
I agree with that too.
And that, maybe we can tweak that a little bit, you know, after some more board members look at that part and see.
Well, I think, what you've got in there, I think, Freddie, you've got four measurable goals and you don't have to put in there, so the academic improvement, y'all can decide what the goals you're going to set in there.
Just not even put academic improvement, but four measurable goals, leaves out that, you know, our measurable goals could be academic.
That depends on your strategic plan as to what you want to come up with, so you might lay the academic out of it, if that's what you want to do, just a suggestion.
Yeah.
If you did that, you're only talking about student data and test scores and that type of thing, yeah.
Financial performance and, and things like that too.
Attendance, it could be, uh, particip...
Doesn't give a test score on that, does it?
Yeah.
So, um, let's see, I, I, I mean, that's limiting us, if we just use that word like Prater said. So, we still could come up with the four measurable benchmarks, but it doesn't have to be academic improvement, just mark it out.
That would have to tie back in partially to your, two things there, your strategic plan and then your evaluation process.
Right.
Right, right.
Yeah, and that's how you pay the, and that's how you pay the, the bonus is if you get an adequate score on the performance evaluation that says you've met these goals, then the performance basis...
You may want to use more than four goals.
Right.
Yeah.
You may want to come up with five or six, whatever you determine in there.
So the question is...
So we can put as part of the strategic plan developed pursuant to section three, which would be our B, section 3B, above, the board will establish, we don't have to put four, we'll, we'll establish measurable benchmarks of Coffee County schools that if met, will entitle the Director to performance-based bonuses of whatever we want to...
Right, whatever we want to pay.
Now, the way Boyd is worded here though, this is over the life of the contract, do we want to do that on an annual basis? Or do we want to do it over the life of the contract? So, there's a couple options there.
The what now?
The way Boyd is worded here is these performance bonuses are paid, uh, if you achieve these over the life of the contract, as opposed to annual, so, do we want to have annual goals?
Well, that would come in... Well, that would come into the discussion when we talk to the rest of the board about the amount.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that's where it'd come into the amount.
Yeah. I guess I kind of prefer annual goals and performance, you know, because it's, you know.
Immediate, you know, if you've accomplished it, you you've been rewarded for it, then it kind of gives you a boost to do it again.
Yeah, it gives you a little bit more of a incentive.
Right.
I think these be an annual goal amount of, if you're gonna find a manual, an an annual amount of bonus if you're gonna do that instead of over a period of the contract.
Right, right, exactly.
Well, they could put, and well, I mean, like it says, over the term of this contract annually.
We could, but I guess what it meant, I think what that means is there wouldn't be any more than ten thousand, you know, allotted for it. That's what.
Yeah, if it-
For the whole term.
For the whole contract, but if you added, if you added annually to the end.
Uh-huh. Right.
And when we settle on this amount.
Uh-huh.
For it to be five thousand or something instead of ten.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not to exceed five thousand annually.
Right.
Is that what you're?
Let's see, if met, will entile the director performance-based bonuses of twenty-five hundred a piece for a total performance, possible performance bonus of ten thousand over the term of this contract. So I'm reading that, that over the term of this contract, he could po- he or she could possibly get ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And uh
And this is a-
I guess they came up with, they're going, they're going willing to give somebody ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For the term of the contract if they meet those goals.
And this was a three-year contract, so, yeah.
But they didn't say, it just says it, what that means. That if met, will entile the director performance-based bonuses of two thousand five hundred dollars a piece. What's that mean?
Well, for each goal.
Oh, for each goal, for each goal. And I I think that ought to be, that shouldn't say a piece, I'd say for each goal met.
Right, yeah.
Or something to that effect.
You know, just throwing it out, my preference would be to do something like-
And like you said, annual.
Yeah, do it annually and then and then pay the performance bonus annually, so.
Over this contract annually, yeah.
You know, up to five thousand dollars a year or something like that.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, whatever the board decides on that.
Yeah, or twenty-five hundred per goal or whatever.
You need to have a set number in there, whatever you come up with.
Right, you're not going to go with that, right.
You get a bonus of X number of dollars annually for performance contract.
But I do think- Right. But I do think as a board, we need to really sit down and look at the, what is the scale, base scale now of the director?
We got-
Someone's got a master's degree and and oh, how many years' experience do we require?
That information went out, so there, you should have that.
Wow.
I didn't bring it with me.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, but I can't.
I can't, I just, but we need to look at that again, because we need to be competitive.
Because I think that Toluoma was the director, told one hundred and ninety or something.
Hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty?
I've got it wrong in a second.
Um Dr. Vaughn is making?
Hundred and thirty-eight now.
Next year he'll go.
Hundred and eighty, hundred and thirty-eight.
You can say it, you can say it to Mike.
Let's see, hundred and eight-two.
That hadn't have been approved of the-
Three hundred and eighteen thousand.
Been approved of the school board, hadn't been gone, hadn't gone.
Coffee County, we had.
Yeah.
We know about.
Yeah.
Um.
That was a good point.
There was some salary survey that that went out and I I probably should have brought that, I I did not.
Oh, well, we're not, we're not on that right now. We're just, I'm sorry, but I'm just, I'm I'm not-
If we if we generate one document from these two by the time we're done today with these areas just a blank and let each board member look at it and think about it, then we can hash it out at a meeting.
That that's kind of what we need to do.
Oh, yeah. Insert this first, yeah, because that's gonna confuse a lot, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get all, we'll build one document from the two, but then have big blanks right here.
Yeah.
Right, on what, yeah.
And then send it to everybody, let them fill it in.
Right.
And go from there.
Alright. So withholding, that's fine, I see. Uh and then so everything add one, six, benefits.
We we can't do this. Oh, I thought it meant other Washington County schools. What does that mean? Except as provided in this contract, the board will provide the director with the same benefits granted, oh, licensed employees. I didn't, sorry, I didn't read it off the whole law. They got different school systems too, and they're gonna give him the same benefits. That that makes sense, licensed employees.
Yeah.
And that's pretty well.
I that's, I think that's pretty standard.
Mm-hmm. Uh, well. Halliburton over here.
Mr. Chairman, on the on the benefits, you might need to address, let April address what benefits you're providing. So you'll have an idea of what's going on there.
Have you looked at these? Yeah.
I wasn't playing on coffee today, I was listening.
You know, you can't forget that.
You think the director has the same benefits, but you might need to let April.
Insurance.
Uh-huh.
Right.
If you notice, there's changes there.
I mean, I'd like for it to be specific, don't you?
Let's free look at the, what are we missing? What what is Halliburton missing that?
Oh, maybe it's because we're just doing this way, you know what I'm saying?
Maybe we're doing it backwards.
Well, we can, I mean, we can, there's no problem collating all this together.
Right, so far, we've done more Halliburton, except for this, except for the strategic planning. The Halliburton has something, you know, everything.
Well, it only has strategic planning and compensation. That's all we've.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So maybe we do the Halliburton and.
Well, benefits is is six on Halliburton. So they got them in slightly different order, so.
Yeah, I think April needs to address what benefits you're getting.
Well, I was just gonna let her look at these two contracts and see if it triggered.
So it's a, I guess the previous contract was a little bit different from what we offer our licensed employees. So there was vacation time that was built in previously that, I don't know if that'd be y'all's choice if y'all wanted to do that, because our licensed employees only get sick and personal days. They don't get vacation days unless they're central office, they're on contract, whatever. Um so it wouldn't be the-
You wouldn't say licensed employees, but it wouldn't, but that's what was throwing me off when it said licensed employees.
I think you wanna be more specific to my, I mean, to me that if you wanna be intentional about, you wanna give vacation, obviously you probably wanna do that. And then um holidays, we do holiday, holidays, medical, life, disability, we'll have dental vision, retirement, um which they'll be eligible for retirement anyways, but that's not mentioned in this contract.
Look at the Halliburton one there.
I was gonna look at what we had before in here.
I think that's the angle covers all that.
Okay, so on the four, we had the director shall be placed on two hundred and fifty-seven, fifty-seven day contract work calendar with all central office supervisors. I mean, this is more specific to what's going on here now. It's according to whether we wanna keep that.
Well, did you look at the uh, did you look at that Halliburton?
Which, where's that at on the Halliburton, Robert?
Huh?
Which number is that?
Number six.
Okay.
Yeah, number six, benefits.
Yep.
Look on number, look on the Boyd contract, if you will, on page three, uh number eight, it talks about work year and leave, and that discusses some of the-
No, I like the way that one's set up.
What's it talks about here?
Uh-huh, yes.
Yeah, down there.
Well, on the benefits though.
So this one, I mean, so we currently offer everyone. We offer dental, vision, medical, retirement, and then if supplemental, which is out, which would be their choice, but I think this section would cover life disability, it would cover this.
Boyd versus benefits of Halliburton.
Oh, okay, I thought we were talking about the work contract.
I think six is maybe better on the on this on this copy. I don't know which one I have.
Halliburton.
So it's just the benefits, it's not the contract, yeah.
Kind of how I remember it.
Right.
So, okay, so the benefits on the Hallibur- so once again, we've only got two in Boyd that-
Well, let's just, yeah, let's stay on this.
I mean, you would have probably wanna add dental. You probably would add, wanna add dental because it mentions optical, but it doesn't mention dental in in there.
Optical, so.
It mentions optical but not dental, that's really strange.
I'll put that dental.
I'm not sure why.
Insert Halliburton number six.
Yeah. It's a lot easier to put dental in Halliburton than to take all of this out and put it over.
Include dental, include dental, okay.
Alright, so so are we gonna use Halliburton for compensation two?
No, I think we kicked it out because of the-
Okay, so we're gonna keep, alright, because it's got the performance, okay. Alright, so number-
Yeah, the only thing from Boyd that we're keeping was number one, three B, strategic planning and compensation.
Right.
Okay. Benefits from Halliburton, alright.
Include and and add dental, include dental in that on that.
Dental, okay. Alright, um, alright, professional liability.
That'd be number nine in Halliburton.
I think that sounds pretty good. Yeah.
Alright, so Halliburton for that too?
Oh, well, I was looking at Boyd, that's it. Let me see what Halliburton says under professional growth. Uh the, in a way, Boyd's is more comprehensive. It doesn't specifically, I don't know.
Yeah.
Not a whole lot of difference on that one, is it?
Yeah.
I think it's about to say.
I think we can, I think we can leave that alone.
I think we just keep seven, yeah. Because it opens it up, it doesn't limit the director to just certain things on on Boyd.
Okay.
And it does say approved by the board and uh and including the actual necessary expenses. So that kind of, you know, you're not specific to what you're having to be so detailed in what you can and can't do.
Alright.
Now you're on professional growth.
Professional growth. And we're running over our hour, but I, it's the way it is.
It was a good shot.
I tried.
We're moving fast.
Yeah.
It will.
Um so the Halliburton is a little more more detailed there. It names specifics.
Oh, that that was the one I was talking about. I'm sorry. I think seven on the Boyd works better because it doesn't get in, you know, doesn't get into naming all these.
Right.
Okay, oh, okay, this is a-
It does mention too, it mentions the uh the TOSS, which is a superintendent's organization, and AAS, which is a national superintendent's conference.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna, I, in my opinion, I don't wanna limit the director. You know what I'm saying? On what they can do, I wanna-
That's probably the main, too, if you're in the city system, you'd have A's, which is another organization, county superintendents are not involved in. But the TOSS and AAS are probably the two main ones. And then generally speaking, they will the system will let you have, will pay your membership into either one civic organization within the sys- within the confines of the board.
Mm-huh.
Uh which are two, sometimes are two. Usually they have the Chamber of Commerce and then one other organization that which could be Juana's Rotary Lines, I don't know what it, but I stick to some of the contracts. I think it's in the one that y'all have now.
Yeah, I think that-
It mentions about three different organizations, that's how it's standing.
Well, really.
But those are in the, those are in the Boyd, professional growth, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, our, this is much better than what we had.
Keep that one and move on.
Okay.
And yeah, we won't put that in there.
Yeah, we'll keep that one and move on.
Alright.
Well, let's see.
Work year and leave.
Uh I I do think Dr. Powell's right, though, is making sure we we have local in here uh included but not limited to the, it shows all that, but, okay, it says local.
Local, state, national.
Yeah, yeah, we want, you know, rotary and things like that, yeah.
That's good. Okay, it says local, so that'll cover it.
Alright, work year and leave.
That'd be number nine, I mean.
We may need some guidance on this one.
Are y'all looking at?
From that end of the table.
I think they're reading from this one, are y'all reading from the?
Okay, yeah, Boyd, three of six, work work year and leave.
So I know that the previous director was on two fifty-seven, so that would be what would have to be decided um there. They put on two fifty-seven because we were building an additional calendar just for the director. And it was like difference of one day. By the time you look at the work calendars, there was a difference of like one day between the two. By the time you add the days off and the um vacation or vacation and and holidays.
What?
What is the city's uh directors? Do you know how many days? I wonder why they have two sixty?
So why was it one day different, just?
Um, it just way it calculate, he was here, like, had to work one extra day that, like, unless he used a vacation day.
Okay.
Pretty much. By the time you factor in the vacation day and the holidays and the days off on that work calendar, it was like one day different. So basically, I was building a work, a work calendar for one person.
Okay.
Um, so that, I mean, that's fine, just have to guys look at that and decide.
Why would the director be here the same days as?
Right, so that was, it made more sense for him to be here, for them to be here when central office was here.
Right.
Because, I mean, you come to work for one day and you don't have anyone here to do, unless you're just cleaning, cleaning your desk.
Lord, I can, I can work a lot by myself.
Well, that's true, too.
That would be-
Let's kick everybody out.
What I would suggest, if you don't mind, is to, since Mr. Shore faces it with the school calendars and so forth, and works with April on the work, on work calendars, is that correct?
I build the work calendars and then, yes, I review those with the director and Mr. Shore.
Because they'll probably have to look at a calendar for a calendar year to see exactly where the days fall, because
Right.
it depends on where the days follow in the calendars, how many days you'd be working particularly, but, you know, two sixty, two fifty-seven, that's that's.
It, but but to me, it seems like it it makes more sense and it simplifies things if the director works the same hours or the same number of days as the admin staff. It's just kind of, I I just, you know, other than the fact that.
Since he's the boss, you'd think he would be there, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't even think I see that in uh, I mean, you get into annual leave and accumulated leave in the Halliburton, but the
I don't, it's leave, it doesn't mention.
The Boyd actually has the work year and leave, all in one thing.
It's eleven and twelve.
Yeah.
Eleven and twelve.
Yeah, that's your annual leave and your accumulated leave, but it's not getting into the
I think in the two there, Robert, uh, I could be wrong. In the Boyd contract, section B, talks about the-
Yeah, I s- I seen it in the Boyd, but I didn't in the Halliburton.
Yeah, there, yeah, that's funny how they-
It says in here, uh, let me look just a minute. It that's, I think that's the same thing as annual leave in that one.
Yeah, they just never did. It it doesn't look like they pinned it to two fifty-seven or two sixty or.
Mm-mm.
No, see, they're looking at, uh, in the uh Halliburton contract, uh they're looking at somewhere, I saw twenty-one days somewhere.
So that I wonder what question, what their work calendar, or what they follow as far as, you know, when they're at work, when they're not at work.
Says the director should be entitled to twenty-one work days of annual leave in addition to the holidays. There are no additional personal days, so in other words, there's twenty-one days that they're entitled to in addition to what'd be Christmas and Thanksgiving and all the other holidays teachers get.
Well, it would just, yeah. It would be based on what, so like, our work calendar is different, obviously, than the teacher's.
And how many personal days does the director have now?
Um, I think he got twenty, the twenty vacation days, and I don't think he got, did he get personal days? I can't remember. I don't think so. I think he just got twenty vacation days.
So he, so this one's getting twenty-one, he's getting twenty.
And then would earn a sick day each month.
What is wrong with the Boyd work year and leave? The ones that are listed in here, what's wrong with that?
That looks fine, eh?
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, I think this Boyd is the better one, because it says it shall be granted one day of sick leave for each month, and shall accumulate those sick days and all that.
Well, you, remember, your sick leave days can be accumulated for retirement purposes, but the annual leave days have to be taken in the annual pound fund. They can't be carried over.
Right, right.
No more than fifteen and it's based off of two hundred and sixty work.
It would be very, I think would be helpful for April if if he just followed really the two hundred and fifty-seven day contract day, which is the same thing as what everybody in the-
Everybody in the central office pretty much.
For the office, there's a few that don't.
Majority. And then, then they're on the same calendar, and she's losing the calendar, the, and it's just connected right in with it, just.
Yeah, that'd be the only thing, that'd be the only thing to change on the number nine, is scratch out two sixty to two fifty-seven.
I agree with Mr. Shore's, just to simplify.
So right now.
And then you just follow the same everybody else is following.
Yeah.
And how many vacation days does he have?
Central office, like, if it, the two fifty-seven calendar, if you look at supervisors, they get thirteen vacation days.
What does the director get?
Um, right now, well, Dr.
Right now, it's twenty.
Previous director, because he was on a different.
Yeah.
He was on a different.
Maybe we need to put him back on one with the. You know, the same, is, is.
Well.
I've never worked for a director that went on the same calendar as I was.
It was like that for the first, my first two or three work calendars, and then we did, went through all the work calendar changes, and then he got voted to put on the central office one. That's when it changed, so I think it last, last year, we did the work calendar changes, I believe.
I know that that one was cha, I don't think that one was changed.
Yeah, he, well, I think in his contract, maybe in the, that was asked for in the, in the latest contract, but I don't think it ever got.
He was asking the contract, I don't think it was changed.
That's right, it never got changed, but that was part of the contract change.
But it'd be easier for you to stay on the two fifty-seven.
Yes.
Dr. Powell has to go, so.
Because I would just have to build in a whole nother calendar for one person, which is fine, but it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense to have someone.
I don't have an issue with that.
Additional days, when there's no staff here.
Fifteen days, better than twenty.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, and, and once again, you know, when, when you get somebody in, you're gonna negotiate that, and.
Yeah.
Usually vacation days or something's a negotiable item on a work contract, I think, so. It may work different in public sector, I don't. I don't know, but I assume that vacation days are negotiable anyway, so. But we can plug that in, so. Um, alright, expenses. Do we want to include moving expenses? If applicable?
Yeah, well.
Well, I would put if, if applicable, yes.
Yeah, right.
Or that could be under negotiable too.
Or as discretion.
Discretion of the board too.
Or something like that.
Yeah, there we go, at board discretion.
Yeah.
Cause I think that would cover a whole lot of, like Freda said it.
And then we can come up with an amount, couldn't we?
Yeah, we'll just leave that blank for now, okay.
Yeah, the board will pay the director temporary housing allowance in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for the first three months.
I.
Uh, that's pretty well, if you want somebody to get over here for three months, and we want to bring them in here, would that be a little toaster at board discretion?
And I'm telling you, Boyd, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, they're gonna be staying, they're gonna be staying in the truck or something.
Around here, that won't.
Okay. The board will provide the director the technology necessary to carry out the duties of the director, including a laptop.
Discretion of the board on that one.
Home printer fax scanner, smartphone, tablet, or similar device, and we have been providing that, right, so.
Good, nah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. So that's non-controversial.
Okay, are we providing him a home printer? Alright, we don't need to get that specific then, so mark out home printer, fax and scanner.
I don't think so.
I think it's a good, a, a box to, right, it's a hotspot.
A Wi-Fi box? Yeah.
Box. I think those are maybe it, just, excuse me, I wasn't paying you that. The technology that was provided to the director outside of here at the network, so the laptop, iPad.
My, my five, that's what, that's what has typically been it, I don't know.
Okay. Alright. Printers are so darn cheap, it really isn't, you know. I think my wife responded for sixty.
You can print them out here.
Yeah.
Covered already in there, but.
They're practically giving them away.
Definitely don't hurt to stay.
I guess they ain't.
Yeah, that's exactly right, yeah, they can print the printer out.
Reasonable necessary expenses actually incurred by the director in the. Reasonably and necessary covers excessive.
Well, yeah.
I'm on E.
A, okay.
Which one?
Why, why was that in there?
Reasonable and, reasonable and necessary.
D should be included back in professional growth, right?
Gives you a lot of flexibility. Do you think, April?
I thought that was somewhere else in here anyway, comp, under.
Number E on nine in the Boyd.
Oh, E?
I don't know if I have.
It's the bigger topic.
Okay, so it's the board policy, so it refers to the board policy, so that would be what would dictate.
Yeah. Yeah.
How we reimburse him, so I think that.
And then if you got outside of that, reasonable and necessary. We would have.
Discretion again.
Scratching again.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think before, we've only, we reimbursed, so they would get the in-town mileage, and then anything outside of the county. They would get, so, you go to a conference in the county, but then if you travel outside the county, we would reimburse.
Well, business including but not limited to travel outside of the county.
That's, that's all we've done.
So, I guess there's a lot of discretion in there to do or not do.
We probably need to look, just, uh, uh, the pol, our current policy to see if there's anything mentioned in there about director.
Verify a policy.
Well, wouldn't that be part of?
I'll just write verify a policy on E of.
Well, right now.
Okay.
Uh, the, ten, and this would be eleven.
Isn't that, does that refer, wouldn't that be referring to what we pay him for mileage?
Yes, the mileage right now is, I believe, within county, we pay him six hundred dollars, and then there's compensation for going outside the county.
Cause it's inside the county.
Six hundred dollars per month.
Right.
For in-county, and then anytime they travel out of the county, they would just, they would turn the mileage form, the travel form to the department to get reimbursed.
That would be his per board policy, so that's already.
Is that?
In place.
Policy or is that? I think that's contractual, so.
It might be.
No, it's not in that policy, cause.
It might be a contract, I don't remember it being in the policy, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I think it's contractual, yeah.
I think that the director is not in the policy, I think that's.
Well, then it would need to be stated here, because where, where is he getting that, we, you know, if it's not in his contract, somebody had to prove that.
Right. Well, that, that is in the contract, yeah.
I just, I just wrote by. I wrote by number E there to verify a policy, and that'll help us dictate that.
And if it's not, it's not in the, I don't think it's in our policy.
I don't think so, but I think it is it, I don't know, I don't have the current contract, does it not say, does it say that in the current?
I was looking for that, I couldn't find it in, anything in the contract. That's in the contract.
Current contract.
There we are, and there, I mean, pages down, really quick.
Sick leave.
Our current.
Here it is, expenses. Okay, the, okay, in our contract now, it says the board shall reimburse the director for all extra unnecessary travel, blah, blah, blah. The director shall receive a mileage allowance for adjoining or in-county mileage expenses of five hundred dollars per month, not to exceed six thousand dollars annually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's in the contract now, we need to put it in there.
That's why I didn't even mark, yeah.
And then the next line.
I like this one here where you got discretion.
The next line talks about outside of the county.
Additional mileage shall be paid for travel that extends beyond the county at the rate established for other school employees. So what's the rate of other school employees, the state rate?
He would, yeah, the state, we would use.
So, I mean, I would, I think it'd just be for state rate anyway, you know, that, we do need to spec, get in on that though, and specify that a little bit more.
See, this one, the Boyd one on it, E, we were on it, I mean, it's the reasonable, I mean, you got so much discretion in there.
But we don't have a board policy that says this, so that's why that wouldn't.
Reimbursement?
It's not for the director, it's not included in our board policy.
The director's not included in it?
No, it's school employees and board members.
But we had a board member, yes.
So are we fine with the, with the five hundred per month lump sum?
Sorry for you.
Are we five, are we fine with the five hundred dollars per lump, lump sum for travel within the county plus mileage outside the county?
Uh.
Beyond one.
What are they doing in these other contracts, are they paying them a mu, a certain amount?
None.
No. I don't, I don't.
It didn't, I didn't see it.
I don't think. I don't think so, I don't think we pay mileage, I don't think we pay.
Oh, the Halliburton contract, additionally, the director will provide a flat rate each month of four hundred dollars for local travel, using her, his or her. Personal veh, her personal vehicle, so.
Four hundred dollars?
So that's just a flat rate for however much travel, so.
What, what, what number is that?
Is that, and that's where?
That is, uh, Halliburton, number eleven towards the bottom, or number, paragraph thirteen towards the bottom.
Okay, but this, this Boyd doesn't have one.
Right.
Okay, Boyd doesn't have one.
Well, it, it, E does make a general. Um.
I think it's, it should be at a flat rate.
The TSBA one doesn't have any.
So that's a.
So we would need to put something in here, a flat rate of so much.
If you wanna do that, I, you know, and that's, that's fine, that's where it's gonna come down, I mean, the majority of the board needs to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise, he had to be keeping up with his mileage when he goes out to the schools and all that, man.
Cause I'm, I'm an, I'm an. I'm a not, but that's just me.
What? What, what would you propose?
Uh, I'm kinda those, you gotta go outside of the bounds of your normal job, yeah.
And we could add that to the salary, we could add that to salary and say, look, you're.
Yeah, I mean, salaries, the salary's gonna be high enough, I mean, that's part.
Yeah, I mean, why, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, why would that not be a part of his job?
Yeah.
Why, why do we need to add four hundred dollars to it?
Uh.
Is that a state law or something?
Because none of the supervisors or anybody else that go out to schools get reimbursed, do they?
We get mileage if we go to the schools.
Do you?
Yeah.
So everybody gets that.
And you think about it, not just mileage, and I'm just throwing this out there for wear and tear on your vehicle.
If you gotta go to a North Coffee School, that's outside of the realms of your actual job, though, correct?
Right.
Yeah, yes and no, yeah, I don't, I don't communicate every day with bookkeeper, I have to have the bookkeeper.
Otherwise, you know, it's.
There is a bookkeeper there that I would be comfortable for helping.
I, I look at it like in my business, you know, when my guys, I've got a fleet of vehicles, when my guys come in and they start my time, they're in my vehicles. For that day. Then at night, they park their, my vehicle, and they get in their vehicle, and then it's on them. And that's just how I am in my business, I mean, I, I guess that is one of the things that, you know, that's a perk in this industry, I guess, I don't know. Cause I'm just not, I'm not used to that.
You know, to me, I just, I'm just mileage, you know, whatever I do as a consultant, you know, it's kinda like.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, it's kinda like per diems, offering per diems to people out of, working out of town.
Yeah.
You know, you wanna throw money at somebody for them to drive their own vehicle to help with the wear and tear and stuff like that, that's just a perk and a different option of different employment and different places.
Right.
But you know, when I'm, when you think about it, uh. A flat rate for him or her, then there's, maybe should be a flat rate for the supervisor, because you get all these people turning in mileage and all this stuff, and. And, uh, I don't know, one month you might not even have a whole lot, the snow days and all this, next month you may be going out every day.
You know, if you're talking about, if, in, in the end of this, we're all sitting here talking and looking, you know, we, we know that we're, we're headed in a direction of. Probably one sixty to upwards to two hundred range of a salary for this director. Don't make a mountain out of a molehill, that's enough money to see you at work tomorrow.
So if you're outside the county, you can get mileage, is that kinda what I'm hearing?
That depends on if we're negotiating, when we get.
If he lives there or not, yeah.
Because we've already handled the deal in here, you must reside in Coffs County.
Right.
You know, you know.
Yeah.
I. There again, that's something.
And that, I think that's more or less a perk for the director, you know, to know that you've got that much that you're gonna be reimbursed for your gas.
Right.
But, you know, I look at it this way, too, like you.
Let that be, let that be an issue of negotiation. Well, what about my vehicle and driving back and forth to school, well, there's nothing in this contract about it, well, I'd like, you know, I need. Okay, well, we'll go for this amount of salary, and all we'll do is just back the salary down. Six hundred a month. And call it whatever. Six and one half dozen of others just streamlines the process, but if you wanna put more eye candy, well, I could get paid this, or paid this, or paid this, then yeah, it definitely needs to be a thing in here of so much money for.
So basically, keep the, uh, the Boyd language in here that's kinda.
It's kinda gives you a little discretion to.
Yeah.
Go down that road if you want to or not.
And then if, you know, if somebody negotiates something, then we can, we can do that.
Gives you room to go down the road or not.
Right, so. But.
Okay, so it is generic, so, to reimburse the director.
But as far as mandatorily, terribly pointing to cash money for it, I don't think that's necessary right now.
Alright.
That's, I mean.
That's a, that's a lot of money. Six hundred dollars a month.
Oh, I think it's five hundred grand.
Why don't we get paid six hundred?
Six hundred grand.
Six thousand a year, you. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
You can almost buy a car for that.
Not anymore, I don't think, not a new one, anyway.
No, no, you can buy, buy a Subaru or something, and, you know.
Alright, perform.
You can put a lot of miles on your car, I mean, not, I'm not saying that, I'm not talking about it, hit, that position, I'm sure you could, but I know. Supervisors that's that, you know, that's actually working with the schools, they should be putting a lot of mileage on their cars, they should be out and, you know, going out to schools, so, they deserve that.
Yeah, they should be. And I, you know, I don't have any problem paying people mileage and stuff, however you do it, so, I, I think that's, cause, you know, it's expensive to maintain a vehicle, I mean, there's kinda pricing.
That, that line, E, I mean, that gives a lot of room to get in and out, if you need to, in the negotiation or not.
Cause if you do, it's really lenicky.
So, yeah, it's just how you wanna do it, so, alright, number eleven, performance evaluation, so annually and no later, we're doing. I think April fifteenth is our.
Okay.
Aren't we, uh?
I like this date in this one. The fifteenth day of December, because that gives you time.
Because you know, you're school's everything, you, you've got all the.
Right.
You've got a lot of hot topics going around that time period in life, and, uh.
I don't, yeah, and I don't.
Lot of information at that time in life.
How we ended up with the April, you know, I don't, do you know?
And let's say.
Do you know how we ended up with the April date for the annual director's evaluation? Yeah, it's just kinda.
Let's just worst case say, okay, we get this information the fifteenth day of December, and then we go through December here, we realize in January, we've got an issue, a major issue. And we're fighting, and we're doing this, and we need to pull some cards on the contract and start doing things different. You got six, seven months. Ahead of time to cash, change, make changes, do whatever, and things of that nature, before you get to our normal turn of the school year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So I kinda like the December the fifteenth date.
Yeah, because everything happens in April, the budget and all this, and everything's going on, and you've got all that coming. Trying to finalize.
Sneaks up on, yeah. Yeah, annual performance evaluation shall be completed by the first day of April each calendar year, um, on the, in the contract here, but we can. Since there's no basis for that, um, we can change that. I don't have any problem with that. Yeah, I like the December fifteenth date, too.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Alright, so how about the rest of this language here?
I see, I, I like that, the, the working relationships between the director and the board, the staff, the students, and the community at large, and any other matter relative to the duties of the director, I mean, that covers not just. It covers what needs to be covered as far as.
And what should be covered.
Mm-huh.
Well, B, everything's referred, uh, to now eleven B.
Okay.
Down here.
Yeah.
Uh. The board and director.
And that's. And that's.
Evaluation format no later than February first of the preceding year. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, and then I think something needs to be put in here that.
In the event the board and the director cannot agree, the board may develop the format and inform the director.
Okay, now, I think something needs to be stated in here that there will be a, um, a summary and a review of the evaluation, and then there will be, I don't know how to word it, but we would need to look at the strengths and the weaknesses and how, how these document how that's gonna be improved, cause it doesn't do any good to evaluate me or anybody else, and I can say, okay, this is my evaluation, I'm just going about my business. But if it shows that I'm real strong in this area, I, I know to continue that way, if it shows I'm weak in certain areas and I need to come up, and the board needs to help me, if I were the director, to come up with ways of helping me improve.
Right.
Cause that's what evaluation's all about, is to, uh, it's to improve, or if you can't improve, you're out of here. Way I look at it.
So.
Uh, how would we, it says, the board shall provide the director with a written copy of the evaluation, which we do, but what we need in a summary of weeks of, including, let's see, I'm just thinking out loud, including a summary of strengths and areas of improvement, and areas in need of improvement. And, oh.
That sounds good. I'm just gonna agree with Frida.
But I mean, what I'm saying, if we're gonna evaluate somebody, we need to do something besides just, you know, have it on a piece of paper and file it somewhere.
And I like eleven B.
And that's why, and that's probably what it meant, cause it says the director shall have the right to make a written response. So, say we evaluated someone and we said you are, uh, you know, the evaluation shows that you are not communicating with the community, well, uh, then that person could come back and say, well, I can show you these, that I am, you know, they gotta wait, but.
They can respond back to it in writing, so it's.
But I do think there needs to be a summary of the strengths and weaknesses, not, you know, there's, in, in writing.
So this TSBA contract here, if you go.
Okay.
If you look at, I guess it's kinda listed as page fifty-nine, but if you look at performance evaluation here, it spans two pages, but that might be getting at kinda what you're talking about, Frida.
Probably, let's see.
The last, at least the last paragraph there, which is on page sixty. It says, the board shall devote at least a portion of a scheduled board meeting, conduct the director's evaluation, and discuss the working relationship between the director and the board. The board shall provide evaluative feedback and establish performance criteria which can be used constructively by the director during the subsequent year.
Yeah, that's.
Well, that's mentioned in the Boyd contract in now number twelve.
Okay.
The next page.
Oh.
And that's why I was, uh.
That's kinda. Huh.
What number?
Twelve.
Oh, you mean in Boyd, I thought you said.
Yeah.
Number twelve.
Director may engage in professional activities, including speaking, writing.
Oh, okay, yes.
Proponent compensation.
And this, this is kinda just the relationship. This, oh, this would.
Well, but that was like he was discussing. Thomas was out of the TSBA.
I think that was, that was referring though to the performance evaluation, that wasn't.
They worked each other in the spirit of cooperation and teamwork. To discuss, discuss board-director relationships. Uh, significant changes in operations and or structure of the administration of the schools with the board prior to implementing any such changes.
Yeah, I mean, this has been really specific. It sounds like they had an issue and they're being specific, but, but sometimes that's good.
Yes.
And I think.
Specific's not a bad thing.
No, and I, I think that's good, because it's saying what the board can do and what the director can do.
That's what I say, I don't, I don't think specific is, is a bad thing at some time, yeah.
All right, so we're, so finishing up eleven, performance. Frida's comment was.
Okay, I put, the board shall provide the director with a written copy of the evaluation, including a summary of strengths and areas in need of improvement. And the director shall make, shall have the right to make a written response to the evaluation.
Right.
Which shall be attached to the board's written evaluation. And, but I think, uh, something needs to be stated in there, you know, just because you've got a, got a list of what needs to be improving, if you don't, the, the board and the director together, uh, I'm just thinking out loud, shall, uh, come up with ways of, of meeting, you know, of strategies for improvement, you know, in other words.
Yeah.
Okay, say we, say a director was not being open.
Accountability discussion.
Yeah, or. How would you say?
Remedy.
Yeah, and remedies for.
Well, that, that's kinda where, what I like about that last paragraph on the TSBA one, where you, you, you provide evaluative feedback and establish performance criteria based on the.
Yes, that's right. Okay, all right, why don't we say, the board shall provide the director with a written copy of, of, uh, the director's evaluation, including a summary of strengths and areas in need of improvement, and what did that say in performance? Uh, Thomas, what did that say about?
Uh, shall provide evaluative feedback and establish performance criteria which can be used constructively by the director during the subsequent year.
Yeah, I put that in there, need of improvement and, and provide constructive, put that wording in there at the end of that.
Okay, I will.
You get.
Yeah.
Okay. And that way, it's not you finishing it up, instead of just, okay, and then I think this, this would be number twelve.
Yeah.
I think, oh, that's good, just insert, just insert Coffs County Schools.
All right. So on to director.
Activities.
Director relations and, um, communications.
I don't know what that professional activities is referring. We've already got.
Well, you got professional growth.
Yeah, I guess.
Halliburton.
Yeah, and didn't we have it in here too? Here, we got it right here. You know, encourage go to professional growth development. This is professional activities, may engage in professional activities, including speaking and writing with, with or without compensation, provided it does not detract from the duties of employment. So I'm wondering if that means like if a person goes and speaks at a, uh, at a conference or something, they, they could do it with, with compensation or without, from the board. Say, say, say a director was really proficient in a certain area and other people wanted to, to consult with him or something.
Where, where are you at, Frida?
Oh, it's under number twelve on page five of six of Boyd.
Oh, okay.
See, it's, see, we've got professional growth, and then this one's got professional activities. I guess that must be referring to something that a director would do on his own in speaking and writing.
Right.
And it says with or without compensation. I put, at the discretion of the board. It say the director came to us and said, I'm gonna go speak, I'm gonna speak at the, um, National Association of Directors, I don't even know if there's a certain thing. And would you, would you pay my expenses, you know? I don't know what that means. I don't know what, what you would be doing.
If he does it on his own without compensation, I mean, that's.
If it was in the summer and you didn't, in other words, we're giving him the, him or her the, the right to do that with or without compensation.
Right.
It's not gonna hurt anything leaving that in there.
With or without compensation, you know, yeah, so.
At the discretion of the board.
At the discretion of the board, put that in there.
Discretion of the board, yeah, so.
Well.
Okay. Did we have anything on board and direct, jumping back, anything on board and director relations? Communications?
I think all that. Everybody thought that was pretty good.
I thought that was good.
Okay, yeah. All right, and then we fix that on what's now thirteen, and then fourteen would be contract termination. That is generally.
Goals and objectives. I'm looking at Halliburton to see if there's anything there in those last few sections before you get to contract termination. Just to see if there's anything else that Boyd is missing.
Well, referrals to the director is covered in here.
Is the loyalty thing in there in the Boyd?
I didn't see that. Well, wait a minute, was that? No.
No. Well. Let's see here, what did we?
That kinda covers.
Go back to, on the front, front page of under duties.
Did we put that in? We put that in, we inserted, we, we're inserting number three, aren't we, or we're not?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're inserting number three, but not seventeen, loyalty nowhere. One of those. But I thought I seen the wording.
But I think that's, what it's talking about there, loyalty, it says the director may undertake consulting work, like, uh, and that, say they, uh, was an adjunct professor at, at
Yeah.
somewhere at an university. They can do that, but they gotta devote their full-time attention and knowledge to the interest.
Well, that kind of, that kind of covers the loyalty under the one we just did.
I know, and what I was thinking.
Yeah, so maybe we change.
The one we just did.
Professional activities on Boyd to loyalty and include the first paragraph there.
And it says, does not detract from the duties of his employment, so that's kinda, it's just more simplified there.
Yeah.
And that, but when I'm thinking about what, uh, under this, uh, cause from removal, you know, that's, to me, we need to be specific about that, because, um, okay, a contract can be terminated for mutual agreement, retirement, or death.
Are you?
I'm, I'm, I'm on, I'm on Boyd, thirteen A.
Loyalty.
Oh, okay, I thought we were agreeing with that, I'm sorry.
Are we gonna include that?
I would say include, change what's now thirteen, professional activities to loyalty, include the first paragraph from Halliburton, and then, and then just tack that on to the beginning, and then include.
Okay.
The, the other paragraph here, and then that covers that.
Good, okay.
And then we move on to contract termination.
Now we're on, yeah, contract termination, now.
All right, this, a mutual agreement, retirement, or death, we all know that.
Yeah.
In most cases, it's not gonna be a mutual agreement. Uh, the contract may be terminated by the mutual agreement of the parties, so we, we know that's gotta stay in.
Uh, the what now? Mutual agreement, retirement, or death? Yes.
And then if it's not mutual agreement, it would be for cause.
So you get to your four calls, right?
Yeah.
In accordance with that.
There's a big difference between Halliburton and the Boyd.
Great big difference.
Yeah.
Where's the Halliburton, let's see.
Halliburton goes into great detail.
Yes. And I'd, I'd really rather change B over here on the four calls to the D in Halliburton.
Okay.
I agree.
You can do that.
Uh. Your unilateral, that's.
Yeah, this is much better.
Yeah. See, removal of office.
Didn't we talk about?
Especially D.
That's not even over in, uh.
Yeah, just mark it, just get rid of this and.
Yeah, that's what I put. Boyd, I put D in Halliburton.
Well, all of it. I think we oughta just do the contract termination number nineteen, insert number nineteen, the whole thing.
Oh.
Put it up here.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, just put that whole thing in there. Cause it, it covers everything. It covers social agreement, retirement, disability.
You're talking about scratching out Boyd fourteen and just putting the entire Halliburton.
Uh-huh, and then we could tweak Halliburton, cause it's more.
Halliburton nineteen.
Yeah, cause again, you've got, you know, contract policies and all of that with that, with nineteen. That's what I, I like about that one, too.
Yeah, that's pretty detailed language.
It's very, you've got all of your, uh, TCA, you know, policy numbers and all that for termination and dismissal and unilateral. Yeah, there's no, no center of the line or center stream there, so.
One thing we did skip, if I can jump back here, is tenure, so. And it does not address it in Boyd, but in, um,
Halliburton.
Halliburton, it says, the director hereby forfeits any rights to tenure and agrees that upon termination of this contract, uh, their employment in Washington, kinda, well, that's, yeah, will terminate, so. Do we wanna have that language in here?
I think you have to.
I, I don't think it would hurt.
Yeah, so I can answer that.
I think if you do decide to be a director, I think you have to forfeit.
Yeah, but I, yeah, but it doesn't hurt to have it in here specifically, so I can add.
Where do you wanna interject it?
Probably after loyalty or, or it is, yeah.
So tenure, eighteen.
Yeah, so that would be fourteen, and then contract termination would be fifteen. And then amendments, which is sixteen. Seventeen and eighteen, so sixteen would be amendments, which is pretty straightforward. Seventeen is entire agreement, which is pretty straightforward, and eighteen is nepotism. Any changes there?
I think it's a good thing to have the nepotism thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the, I think the ne, I think nepotism is defined by law. And then we also, we have a, we have nepotism policy.
I, I think you're right, yeah, I think there's policy.
So maybe sixteen should reference policy and.
Well, it would be eighteen now.
Or, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we can reference policy. I'll look up the policy number.
It's easy to do. I've gotten behind twice already.
Okay, so jumping back to the Halliburton termination, is there anything of those that we wanna change the language? Pretty darn detailed.
Yeah.
Very good.
Not that I, not that I've seen.
See, D, see, look at nineteen D. I mean, that's, that's very specific.
I gotta remember where I am now.
Under Halliburton.
Oh, it's on Halliburton.
It's where it's got discharge of cause, uh, conduct, deduct, conduct, including but not limited to negligent, negligence of duty. And it's got the policy numbers and all that down there below it too, so it's.
Yeah.
So there's no, there's no.
That's state law. That's not policy.
Yeah, I know, but, well, or state, well, it's a policy.
Neglected duty, insubordination, inefficiency, incompetence, or unprofessional conduct in accordance with the laws of the state of Tennessee, defined in TCA forty-nine five oh.
Yeah.
One and forty-nine five five eleven, or any other applicable state law is an, I don't know, discharge.
All right, anything else?
Where it ought to be.
I will kind of consolidate this and get it out to everybody and, and so you can comment and see what mistakes I made. And slap me up on the side of the head and correct me.
I doubt that's gonna happen, Tom.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna happen. I think, uh, that was pretty.
This has been a good meeting.
Yeah.
Pretty good, I think.
Sure, I do. It ran long, but, uh, and we'll just have to take up.
We're just an hour over.
Take up evaluation another time, yeah, tonight. Um, so, let's call the meeting then, and, uh, we are done. Thank you, April, for your wisdom as always.